Good evening and welcome to Public Affairs Public Access on Houston Media Source TV. I'm Gene Proyce with the Legal Women Voters of Houston. Welcome back. We're hidden here live in the studio again, and we have several things to talk about. There's a lot of important things going on in the news. We're about to celebrate, or we have celebrated, Texas Independence Day. That's number one. But across the world, we're having problems in the Ukraine. Here at home, there is confusion and concern over the voting, the primaries that we had earlier this week. And it is to the point of elections that I want to turn to. At the beginning of last month, Al Castillo with LULAC Council 60 went to city council and made a public presentation. And we're going to show a little bit of that presentation to you in just a second to kind of set the stage about what we're going to talk about today. And then I'll come back and introduce our guests. So let's roll this clip of Al speaking to the Houston City Council. All right, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. We'll put that up in just a second. So let me go ahead and introduce my guests since I've got some time right now, and we'll come back to that clip later on. So with me is the man in the hot seat, Al Castillo, who is president right now of LULAC Council 60. Al, thank you for being on the show with us tonight. We're going to come back and talk about what you said in just a second. We have Dr. Sergio Lira, who is president of council. Now, remind me of the numbers, I'm sorry?
Forty-nine, sixty-seven.
Forty-nine, sixty-seven. Forty-nine, sixty-seven. You're actually in... We've got several different LULAC councils here in Houston, and we also have two different districts. Al, you're in Council 60, which was the first LULAC established here in Houston, Council 60, and that is District Eight. And you're District Eighteen, right?
District Eighteen, that's correct.
So we have, you know, Houston's a big place, and we have a lot of LULAC councils. So we're going to come back and talk about that in a second. And let me say, we've also got some Zoom guests with us today. First of all, we have Yasmin Davila, who is also with us today, and we'll be talking to her in just a minute, and Dr. David Branham, who is a political science professor at University of Houston Downtown. And also, when we move on to talking about Afghanistan... No, the Afghanistan, sorry. Why am I thinking of that other twenty-year invasion? Freudian slip, right. The Ukraine invasion that's going on right now. Alexander Belikowski, military professor, professor of military history at UH Downtown. And, you know, of course, you guys can chime in anytime you want to. Don't just wait for me to, you know, go to you. If you've got something important to say, don't be embarrassed. Don't be shy. Don't be coy. Join us in on the conversation. And we're also going to open up the conversation to you. This is the first time in, golly, two years that we've been able to do phone conversations. We'll post that number up, so if you want to call in and ask questions or make comments nicely, we'll be able to do that as well. So, Mark, whenever you're ready with that clip, go ahead.
It's ready.
Okay. Here, we're going to try this again.
Right behind, one of those, yeah, right there. I'm Mayor Turner, state council member. How are you? I am Al Castillo. I am president of the historic LULAC Council 60 here in the city. I'm here to speak today on the LULAC initiative to reconfigure our voting districts from nine single-member districts and five... I'm sorry, eleven single-member districts and five at-large districts to sixteen single-member districts. But first, before I continue on, I do want to say, since we're talking about council members and representation, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Robert Gales, who is my representative and district guy. He's done a fantastic job. He has his head in the game and his eye on the ball, and he's really taking care of his business. And I really would like to extend that appreciation. Black History Month, fascinating, just inspiring. How these people have arisen in the face of adversity is just awe-struck about their courage and their resolve. Well, we in the Hispanic community have a similar history. We've suffered from the same Jim Crow laws in the fifties and sixties. We too have risen up to our potential in the face of adversity also. We do feel that the single-member districts is a way for us to go as a community, to go for the Latinos and for the Hispanics. Because since its inception and its implementation, forty years ago, we've had two representatives. The great Gracie Science, I can call her great because she's my wife, beautiful wife, and the great... Forgotten now, Orlando Sanchez. I can call him great because all you gotta do is ask him. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Councilman Knox. He's on the screen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Castillo, am I to understand that LULAC is interested in representation suppression? Because as you know, the single-member district represents... The people that live in that district have that person. But here in the city of Houston, they have five additional at-large council members. So every single person in Houston is represented by six council members. And I think that's a very effective way to do business. And secondarily, am I to understand that LULAC suggests that only Hispanic elected officials can represent Hispanic people? And is that true of other ethnicities? Is it necessary that only black council members can represent black people? Only white people can represent white people? That only Asian people can represent Asian people? In that case, do you think the mayor is unqualified to represent some portion of our population because of his skin color?
Don't put me in that conversation.
I'm just saying, it's possible that...
I understand what you're saying. However, we've had, in our Hispanic community, we've had representations across the board, an array of, a cadre of representatives.
Okay, so that's the gist of your statement, is that we should end the at-large districts and that we should go to single-member districts. Dr. Lira, you are the co-chair of the LULAC redistricting task force. We just went through a lot of problems with the redistricting. What do you think? Why... I know this is a LULAC initiative, right? LULAC National is suggesting this as well. And so this isn't just you, but other LULAC councils and members that are saying this. Why do you think this is important?
Well, let's just go back a little bit. I think Mark Jones from the University of Rice hit it on the nail. I want you to imagine this, and legal women voters that are out there. If we only had one woman on city council, there would be an outrage. If we only had one African-American on city council, there would be an outrage. So this is very similar. Why is there not an outrage? So the national president of LULAC convened a meeting in September and had our local leaders and national, I mean, local presidents together and say, "Hey, guys, what's going on here in Houston? There's only one representative of our community, yet we're almost fifty percent of the population according to the 2020 census." And if you know, the importance of the 2020 census is to have representations and resources from the federal level coming down. As we know, California lost a seat, New York lost a seat. So the impact of the census, it's extremely important and critical. Therefore, you provide more resources, but you must have representation based on the census number. So as we continue to go up and have less representation, that is just not acceptable.
Now, Al, I think that they kind of put you on the hot seat there whenever you're up there making this presentation. And he says, well, you know, Gracie was elected at large, Orlando was elected at large. So, I mean, what he's asking, and so let's go ahead and just get this on the table here. Is this not hypocritical to ask to get rid of single-member districts when we've had Hispanics elected, at-large districts? We've had Hispanics elected at large.
It's been thirty years since Orlando was first, was last elected as a at-large candidate. So we're oh for thirty, oh for thirty years. If you tabulate that up, hundred and three, is it a hundred and three races?
A hundred and eleven.
A hundred and eleven races, oh for a hundred and eleven. So how is that going to change? How is it going to turn around all of a sudden? It's not. It has to be brought to the forefront. This is an issue. And it's not just for Hispanics. It's across the board. I mean, the entire city. It takes a village, and it takes a village to represent one.
So let's go to one of our guests, Yasmin Davila. Yasmin, as a young Latina, what do you think? Is this still an issue? Is it an important issue to have? Do we need, you know, as Councilmember Knox asked, do we need to have Hispanics representing Hispanics?
So I just wanted to start off by saying I don't self-identify as Latina. But I think the issue with representation is that we often confuse image by values. And oftentimes, the people that carry a Spanish name usually do not represent us. And I think we have to be careful in having that be our guiding principle. So I think representation, the way that we perceive it and see it, oftentimes doesn't come true to speak for the people, which is the community. So that's somewhere where I'm at in the idea of representation. I think, you know, people like Lea Hidalgo have done a great job, but oftentimes, we don't see that even with people who have gotten into power.
So that is a concern. I'm going to ask Dr. David Branham, a political scientist. David, what do the numbers say? So Councilmember Knox said, you know, there are predominant Latino districts, and they're not getting out to vote, so that's why Latinos don't have elected officials. Is that accurate?
I wouldn't personally say that it's because they're not getting out to vote. I think there are a lot of Hispanic Latinos, or however you want to categorize them as a group. For instance, my wife prefers Hispanic. But if you look at the population, there are a lot of young people who are not eligible to vote. They're under eighteen years old. There are a lot of people who are undocumented, and they are not eligible to vote because they don't have citizenship. So you can have a district, like District J, which was in later in the video, where you have sixty-four percent Hispanic population, and it's very easy for you not to elect a Hispanic representative out of a district like that because such a high percentage of the population only doesn't go out to vote, but they can. They're not eligible to go out and vote. So that's something that you always have to take into account when you draw these districts where you want a Hispanic opportunity district. To get a Hispanic opportunity districts in some parts of the city of Houston, you're going to get up to about eighty percent to do that. And a lot of people don't understand that, but that's actually the case.
Well, I would like to, absolutely. Councilmember Knox said, "Well, you're fifty percent of the population." And I go, "Sir, that's the overall population. It's not the eligible voting population." So those numbers are skewed, and I guess he has a wrong impression.
Well, I think, you know, and by the way, I do agree that your wife is fantastic.
Well, thanks for that.
Well, my wife is Samwanita Garza, and her and Lucy Rain. I used to do a lot of great things in the community together.
Sure.
And I think she's fantastic. But she was able to win an at-large seat.
She was.
And, you know, just in the county judges' race, just in the primaries, Hispanic candidates got almost seventy percent of the vote, about sixty-five percent of the vote in both primaries combined. In the Republican primary, they got over sixty percent of the vote, and, you know, Lea Hidalgo got, I think, seventy-seven percent.
Seventy-seven, yeah.
Hispanic candidates can get voted in at large. I mean, it's not unpopular. It just takes, you know, you just have to do that. And so it's hard to do, I understand. And there's a lot of things that an at-large candidate will not focus on in a particular community. I know Ben Reyes was the first to basically make this a point, that, hey, you know, you need a council member that knows everybody in the district to actually represent that district. So it's a different kind of representation than at-large representation. So I'm not sure what the true right answer is on this. I'm willing to, you know, just tell you what I know and let the city of Houston go on and make the decision on what to do going forward.
So you brought up Ben Reyes, and I'm going to tell you, you know, I know Ben and his family. So one of the things that they always say too, right? And you're right, this is something he still says today, is that you have to get, you have to know the community, that it's hard work, that you would have, that, you know, that just getting elected, that's just the start of the job, right?
That's hard work, yes.
And that is hard work. So let me ask another question. Thirty, David, correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-eight percent of the Hispanic vote went to Trump. There is no Hispanic vote, right? It is a diverse vote. Hispanics, Latinos, Latinas, vote differently. And do the parties know that? Are the parties in touch? Because, I don't know, Yasmin, it's my impression that a lot of young people don't always see the, "Why should I vote? What does it matter?" I've heard people say, young people say that. What is your impression of how young people feel towards voting today?
I feel like it's a lot of not being impressed by what has happened and what hasn't happened. I think we understand that the political game is always about promises that do not happen. And even in political campaigns and everything, the people that are running only appear during the time that they're running. And I think that discourages us, as, you know, in 2020, when the riots started happening, Latin people getting killed, and they're still being killed, and all of these things that we bring up, it's almost like we're not heard and we're seen as dreamers. But I think we have this vision of a better society in which we are in community-based. And I think that's where the detachment comes from, and that's why there's a lot of critical thinking behind what voting actually does and what it hasn't brought in. Because that's only a small fraction of what we're supposed to be doing to move forward. We're not going to go, we're not going to get to where we want to be by relying on this government. And I think this new generation, which I'm a part of, is realizing that, you know, we are colonized. We're in a colonized nation, and we understand that, that we're on stolen land. So I think we're coming in a little bit more critical lens, and I think that's where we kind of detach from the older generation, which I feel like y'all have a lot to, you know, tell us about. But there's just, yeah, I feel like there's this conflict.
Hold on, I'm the older generation.
Wait a minute, hold it. Time out. Time out. I'm going to get you later.
Yasmin, we're going to have a different... You know, let me just touch on that, Ms. Davila. This is a different generation. There are intergenerational gaps here. I always say that the millennials, this generation, is the smartest generation because they were born with a little computer in their hand, and they have so much knowledge and they have so much more wealth than as opposed to my generation when we were your age. However, there is a different, there is a disconnect in terms of historical context because this is the Instagram culture, this is the TikTok culture, this is the instant information culture. We grew up, you know, during the Vietnam era, where there was activism in the streets. There was the civil rights riots. You talk about George Floyd riots. We had the Jose Campos Torres riots. We had riots for years. And so that's a different context in terms of this generation. But it's all, it's, what we need to do is connect. The past was the present for the future, and that's what we need to do. And, you know, it's just something that us, you know, folks are on the tail end that we need to work with you, but also at the same time, work with us.
Right, and I do believe that. But just from experience, I do think even whenever you're trying to work together, there's this type of, I don't have the word for it, but I'm not sure if resentment is there, but it's like, we had it harder. I feel like there's that, like, idea of, like, you know, you have to work harder rather than, like, amending, like, this is where we're coming from. And we do have this available to us, like, we do know technology. We do, like, instead of uniting those forces, I feel like there's a disconnect, not only generationally in what has happened and what we have experienced because we're going through so many historical events now, but also just of values and what we see important in our community. And I think a lot of the younger generation, and I say younger just to refer to the younger voters, I think it's just a little bit more consciousness of, like, what we want next. And I feel like we're not relying on political campaigns and political people to do that work for us. We're kind of looking inward.
And you also just mentioned that y'all don't, y'all don't literally, like, you're just stating, trust the government, so they're more reluctant to participate in the voter participation process because of that ideology?
I feel like a lot of us, myself included, I, yeah, I feel like there's lost promises there. And even whenever I have, you know, I still have worked, you know, amongst political people. And I think there's this respectability politics that you're still playing into that is white supremacist. And I feel like all the factions of, like, that come into politics is white supremacist. So it's just playing into the same game that hasn't gained us anything.
Okay.
So I do think that this is an issue. And David, can you guide us on this? Here's my question. Do we see a difference between how younger voters vote and how older the white-haired generation is at this table, how we vote?
Absolutely. And, well, it's not an old thing. Younger people have always turned out less than older people. I mean, older people have more time. I know that I have, you know, I have more of a focus on the community than when I was young. When I was young, I was looking for a career and a way to make money and a way to make, get a house for my, you know, for my family. And that's my priority. So that's always been the case. But especially at the federal level, there is a bigger divide than ever before with younger people voting Democrat and older people voting Republican. And it's mainly out of transfers because in the federal government, most transfers go to older people. The vast majority of transfers of tax dollars from one pocket to another go to older people. So older people have a real stake in, you know, in what's going on, and they're tending to vote Republican. And younger people, when they vote, they're much more likely to vote Democrat. And as they get older, they tend to vote more Republican the older they get. That's something that's a trend that's gone on in history, but it's bigger now than ever before. There's real generation divide now that has never happened in previous history. So when you refer to that, it's absolutely true. And you also refer to Hispanic population, how they vote. The Wall Street Journal just did a poll that basically said it's fifty-fifty Democrat/Republican. And part of it is because the Hispanic population did very well during the Trump years. You know, there's a lot of bombastic language and, you know, continuous news that was both positive and negative. But when it came down to the reality of what's in my wallet, the Hispanic population did much better in the last four years than they're doing now. So I think consequently, Republicans are taking advantage of that. If you look in the Rio Grande Valley, for instance, Republican vote is up everywhere, in every county in the Rio Grande Valley. It's much larger than it was before. So I think what you're seeing is a bigger division of the Hispanic population between Democrats and Republicans. I don't know if the Republicans will keep that up. I don't know if they will. If they're smart, they'll try their best. But that's where we are on it now. So that vision is there.
Okay, so not to cut you off, but I'm going to. Not to cut you off, but I want to. Because I do want to ask an important question here. Well, I think it's important. I want to ask you about this disconnect. So you're talking, you were talking historically about, is it, is this not unusual then that young people don't vote as much? And that when they do, they tend to vote more liberally than the older generation?
Well, if that question's me, it's, I mean, I think it's, a lot of it's media-driven. You know, on the news, that people talk about a liberal bias on the news. Well, who watches that news is often young people, and the advertisers are focusing on young people. They don't, you know, old people like me, they're not going to buy, you know, they're not going to bother. So it's a market that's really driven by young people. And it's, now it's social media-driven as well. So that's, you know, that's kind of the dynamics of what's going on politically. But at the same time, they can't make voting the priority that older people do. It's just not as easy to do.
Okay, so, sorry. I do want to say that we do have a number that just popped up on the screen. If you are interested in calling in and asking a question, it's seven-one-three-eight-zero-seven-one-seven-nine-four. We have a few more minutes in this segment. So I do want to, so, look, there's a lot of good information. So Yasmin, let me come back to you. So Dr. Lira made a good point. How do we, how do we establish some reproachment? How do we get the young people and older people, or more experienced generation, to come together and to actually talk about some of these issues? Because you bring up some very good points. And you're right, you do have, you do have a technological edge and some communication edge that the older generation should be taking advantage of. And as I think, as you were pointing out, or one of the issues is that there's an experience level over here on this side of the white-haired table. So how do we, how do we come together and share these ideas and at least have a conversation?
I feel like it would have to be a big cultural shift. So in the Native American culture, there's this idea of setting the generations forward. So everything that you do now is for the generations to come. And so I think that with the more experienced generation, it would be this being open to new ideas, not like taking us seriously and taking these ideas as in you want to learn, rather than like, oh, I'm too old for this, I'm too old for that, or like, this is how we did it, like, some type of stubbornness that I feel like I encounter a lot amongst people who have been in the movement longer because we've already done what y'all have done, you know? Now we have new ideas, and that's kind of what we want to go up, go from. But also, I think, just having events that are cultural and, like, celebrate us, I think in that sense, where we can, a place where we can convivir juntos. So trying to, like, bring us together, like, you can do that party. And I feel like that sounds very odd to say, but I feel like that's where you kind of bring all these generations and kind of see where we're coming from and all these things we have to share. And I think historically, we don't know a lot of, at least myself, and I was raised here in Pasadena my whole life. I don't know a lot about, like, the activists. Like, I've been starting to read up on them, but they're not really celebrated. And I feel like that's a way that we can kind of come and celebrate y'all. But also, y'all can give that experience to us and tell us, like, this is what happened, or this is what worked, and this is what didn't work, like, brainstorming. I feel like that will bridge us together because that way, we can kind of see where each other is coming from and just build on that and, like, imagine all of these things that are possible and just bring our experiences that we have. I don't think there's a actual, like, divide unless we create it. And I think we tend to create it because we want to be right.
Let me just add something.
Yeah, I want to come back to you.
Yes, what Jasmine said, and I love the example of folk, you know, the Indian tradition of passing on to the next generation. And that's what we do with LULAC. If we look at the historical context of LULAC for ninety-two years, fighting for civil rights, fighting for education, fighting for housing, fighting for equality, fighting for equity, we are... We are on the shoulders of folks who came before us. And now we're going to give this message, and that's why we're still involved with LULAC, because we also have young students that we, we have in our youth groups. In fact, I ran into one the other day at a manifestation in downtown to the death of Arlene Alvarez. And she said, oh, you were with LULAC. And she said, yes, I love LULAC. Because when I was a student, I was a member of the LULAC, and I received a scholarship to go to college, and it helped me. So connecting and keeping that history and, and including the young folks to understand the historical organizations that have been, that are still here, LULAC, GI Forum. There are new ones, but these are ones that have been existence for decades. And connect with that, those organizations, because they have a long legacy of history. And, and we're not exclusive to anyone. In fact, we're growing more and more in, in, I know Council 60, and we're expanding our youth groups and our youth councils. Come on board, because you guys are going to take the torch.
Very good. Al, last words?
Well, I, I agree.
Not your last words.
I agree, because the young people are the future. And Ms. Yasmin, I mean, she, I see her in action. I mean, she takes care of business. She is out there. She's activist, she's an activist, she's an advocate. She, you know, she knows what she's doing. She's driven. And, and the movement is the young people. Okay, like Doc, I wish I'd have said it first. We're standing on some giants. Our, our LULAC, our LULAC organizations, because I mean, they, they, they argued cases before the, in, before the Supreme Court, when that would never happen. And so, and this, I wanted, I wanted to say this to the doctor here. The Republicans, do they run a democracy or do they run a hypocrisy?
Or monopoly.
So I mean, they're going to tell you one thing.
This conversation with your son not too long ago.
What they, what they do is, is they promise you this, but they do something else. And they're, I mean, voter suppression is an example. I mean, how, how can you not, you're blatantly suppressing the, the minority vote, and you're targeting Harris County. So you're, you're, you're touting election integrity, but you're suppressing the vote like Jim Crow used to do.
Are you pointing the finger at me?
I was talking to the Republican.
My state representative voted for that bill, and you know, I would like to go into the, I mean, when, when we talk about that, I like to go into the, the details, exactly what was happening, what, what specific changes were made. It does, they did make it harder to vote, but they made it harder for, to vote for almost everybody.
Everybody.
So let me, let me go, look.
But I just got through with a primary where we had 250 people standing in line for two and a half hours trying to vote. So there's suppression of vote, of the vote going around. There, I mean, the Republicans in Atos Casita had, were there at 9:50 at night voting, because they didn't have enough machines. So I, you know, I don't want to suppress vote. I, I, you know, I, but there are, there are laws in place meant for voter integrity. I hope that's what they do, and I don't want anybody vote suppressed.
I think this should be the topic of another show, but final word, Dr. Alida?
Yeah, just, I'm going to circle back to the redistricting issue from the beginning. And that is why we're asking to eliminate the at-large, to have equitable representation. We are 50% of the population, only 6% of the population. And I know Jasmine mentioned that politicians get elected and, you know, things don't change and they make promises. But let me tell you, historically, look at San Antonio, look at Dallas, when they changed the at-large to single-member districts, those folks provided more resources directly to the community. And that's what we're aiming for, is more pathways for resources for our community. Because the Latino community, whether you're documented or undocumented, spends over $85 billion in this economy, and they deserve representation. That's it.
All right, folks, that's, we're going to wrap this conversation up. We need to, I mean, there's a lot of conversation that needs to go on, and I think we should, we should revisit this. So Yasmin Dabila, thank you very much. Dr. Sergio Alida, thank you very much. Al, thank you very much.
Sir.
Next, we're going to let you go, because I know you need to, to run out of here. I do want to turn to what's going on in, across the world, right? Half a world away, there is a Soviet invasion of the Ukraine. And we've, we've got Alex Abelikowski from University of Houston, Dantown. Alex, you're a military historian. Tell us a little bit about the background of this. I mean, this is the problem, and we're talking about the media, bashing the media, and we're on media. But a lot of times, people maybe didn't know much about this until they turned on their television set earlier this week. So can you give us some background on what's going on? You're, you're.
Right, so, sorry about that. So the, the, the problem, I mean, this literally goes back centuries. We don't have time to do any in-depth discussion of this. But the Ukrainians are a distinct ethno-linguistic group. They are distinct from the Russians or the Poles or any other Eastern European group. They've historically been part of, of Russia since the reign of Peter the Great. So we're talking the early 1700s. The Ukraine had been completely absorbed into what became the Russian Empire at that time. But they never gave up on the idea of themselves as an independent people. And so they've always kind of yearned for that in, in pretty much every aspect. I mean, just even religiously, you know, when, when the wall fell and the Ukraine became an independent country for the first time again in, wow, almost 300 years. One of the first things the Orthodox Church, the Ukrainian Orthodox Church did is break away from Moscow and take the attitude that they are their own separate, independent church. They don't take orders from Moscow, that Kiev is the headquarters. And you know, historically, if you go back to like 988, when the, the Rus people, they're not even Russian, just the Rus people, which kind of makes up modern day Belarus, Russia, the Ukraine, et cetera, when they are Christianized, their, their first center is Kiev. So Kiev is essential both to the history of Russia, but also to the history of Ukraine. And that, you know, that is one of the, the problems, is this is a place that has importance for both two major ethnic groups there in Eastern Europe, you know, much like Israel. You know, the question of Jerusalem and how important Jerusalem is to Christians and to Jews and to, and to Muslims. So we have a kind of similar situation there with Kiev. But after the wall falls, Ukraine becomes independent, as I said. And Moscow never liked that. Moscow's attitude always was, you know, once part of Russia, always part of Russia. And they had been trying to undermine the Ukrainian government for some time. The, the Ukrainians then made a deal in the 1990s to get rid of their nuclear weapons. And this was a deal that was brokered by then-President Bill Clinton, in which we and Russia guaranteed the territorial integrity of Ukraine in exchange for them getting rid of nuclear weapons. And I think that's a very important aspect that's often forgotten in this discussion. Is that, you know, in the 90s, the Ukrainians still had nuclear weapons. The Russians never could have done something like this. And that agreement that's made, we, the United States and Russia are both supposed to guarantee the territorial integrity of the Ukraine. And so, you know, starting with the absorption of the Crimea back into Russia back in 2014, and then events since then. Quite frankly, though I'm not interested in, in rushing to send American troops into Ukraine right now, in a moral sense, we are partly responsible for what's happening, because we did agree to guarantee their territorial integrity back in the 90s. So it's a, it's a real problem. And like I said, this stuff is going back literally centuries. Or, I mean, depending on how far you want to go back, over a millennia. So it's, it's a very, very long, difficult situation. And, and so it's not, there's no easy solution for this. Other than obviously Russia not invading, that would be one easy solution. But I mean, short of that, there isn't an easy solution.
Okay, so this is an, this is an important point, and we, you know, we were talking about this, is that not everybody has the same perspective. And I think that you kind of give a good explanation as to why that might be. I mean, you know, and, and if we go back through American history, any of the conflicts we've been involved with, right, there's always the, the way that we like to, to talk about it. And then there's also the historical way. And, and it's all, it's a, it's a sad thing about people's interest in American history is we don't get much interested in it until we're.
Which treaty wasn't violated?
Well, that's, that's right. But also, you know, we, we don't really know, we don't, we don't know until we're suddenly sending troops over or threatening to send troops over, that then we suddenly get interested, right? And we want to find out about the history. Okay, so the perspective that we seem to be getting right now is on the refugees, right? It's not so much the, the politics or the historical background. It's on innocent people being bombed, innocent families being separated. And so we're, we're seeing the human toll of, of the conflict. How do you think this is going to play out? Do you have any, I mean, it's, we're historians, right? We look at the past, we get, we don't predict the future.
We're generally really bad. Historians are generally really bad fortune tellers. I, I quite frankly, did not think Russia was really going to do what they're doing. I thought, no, there's no way they're going to do it. And then my thought was, well, they're going to take those two, you know, quote unquote, breakaway republics, Donetsk and Luhansk, and that'll be it. So I thought, okay, they'll just do like they did with Crimea. And then, you know, he goes ahead and invades the Ukraine proper. And, and certainly that, that caught everybody by surprise. You know, when you talk about casualties and you talk about, you know, refugees, the Ukrainian government is already acknowledging that over 2,000 civilians, Ukrainian civilians have been killed. The, that's in addition to about 1,500, these are killed, not, not just total casualties. But 1,500 military personnel have also been killed. Now, the Russians, on the other hand, are saying they've only lost 498 soldiers killed. U.S. intelligence officials are saying the number is closer to 1,500 to 2,000. But the, the bigger issue, as you're, you asked, is, is the refugee crisis. We know over 100,000 Ukrainians have already gone ahead and become refugees. They're fleeing into mostly the border of Poland, seems to be the, the kind of favorite part to kind of flee to. But there are other, the other European countries are then accepting them. So they're kind of, Poland is kind of the first stop in a, in a, a chain to get them out of, out of harm's way. But this has the potential to be an enormous, you know, refugee human rights crisis. Plus the question of whether there have been war crimes. And, you know, find, find me a war in history where there weren't crime, war crimes. And, you know, you're, you're going to have found something special. So there are going to be war crimes. The question is, how high up does it go? I mean, is Putin himself guilty of war crimes? If we go by the Geneva Convention, or not the Geneva Convention, I'm sorry. If we go by the Nuremberg Trials, and the precedents set by the Nuremberg Trials, well, arguably Putin is already guilty of waging an aggressive war. And that was a account that was brought against most of the senior Nazis at the end of World War II. So certainly he could be brought to trial. Again, it's, it is a, it's a horrible mess. I really did not think, quite frankly, that the Ukrainians would do as well as they're doing. I thought a week tops, and you know, that would be it. They, they, Russians have captured Ukraine, then we'll be dealing with all the, you know, the, the side effects of that. But, but the Ukrainians, to their, to their credit, are, are doing an amazing job. They're, they're fighting much harder than anybody thought. The way that they are, you know, literally, private citizens are being handed AK-47s, and they're going out and, and fighting the Russians. It's, it's amazing. And so, you know, we, obviously we hope the best for them. But yeah, I don't see how this ends. There's no way it ends happily. I mean, there's, there are already over 3,500 people dead. So there's just no way this ends happily, and it's a question of how bad is the ending, rather than a happy ending? If that makes sense.
David, what is the political fallout going to be immediately? In other words, I'm talking about like, we've got an election coming up in November. How is that going to affect, what, what is the political atmosphere regarding this?
Well, I think there's nationwide support for Ukraine on this, Republican and Democrat. I, I don't think there's any, any doubt that we are supporting Ukraine. The entire NATO group is supporting them. We're not doing it with, with boots on the ground, but we are, we are behind them. So politically, it won't have an effect as far as, you know, whether, whether we're supporting them or not. The issue will be, is the sanctions and the economic fallout that we're going to have from imposing these sanctions. If you go to the gas pump right now in California, it's already $5 a gallon. Our economy was in pretty weak shape before this all started. And Biden was in trouble because of that. I mean, and this is not going to help. Right now, America will be behind Ukraine, and we're saying, okay, in the short run, it'll be fine. It'll be, in the long run, the political fallout, if it continues for a long time. If we, you know, if our inflation rate continues to go up, people on fixed incomes are not able to live. People my, you know, older than me, that's going to be a political problem for Biden as well. I mean, so I think this is part of Putin's calculation, that, okay, America right now is vulnerable. This is a chance for me to go in, and he, they won't be able to do much about this, because Biden's vulnerable. And that was part of his calculation, although I think, I agree with Alex, this was a stupid calculation. His people are behind him, the Russian people are behind him. That's what he depends on, is their support. I mean, there's a long history, just in the last century, of oppression of Russian people. Oh, oh, I mean, be it by Stalin, be it by the Soviet Union, you know, the economic fallout of, of the wall coming down. Putin came in and gave them stability. That's his asset politically. If he loses that, if people said, start saying, okay, I'm not going to, I don't like this, I'm losing money. You know, if his, if his ultra elite start saying, look, this man has issues, then he's going to have political problems. And him having political problems is very dangerous, because he has a lot of political, he has a big military arsenal behind him. So I, I think this is a, something that where Alex is saying, it's not going to be a good outcome. I agree. I'm still very hopeful that some way, somehow, we can let him save a little bit of face and get outs. And maybe, you know, we can have some stability again, but I, I wouldn't predict that at all.
Okay, I want to come to Al and our other guest Yasmin, to, to get their perspective on this, since they were kind enough to, to stay on. Yasmin, let me come to you first. What are you, what is your take? What, what do you think that? We were talking earlier about young people and the disconnect between the older generation and young people. What is your take on how your cohort sees this?
I think we're all.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm like, I don't know if I speak for everyone, but I think we were all just a little bit confused as to what was happening. That's why I was like, trying to listen in, and I've had different, you know, bits of information. So it's nice to know historically what has happened. But I think it's just, I think we're just seeing it as another war that, you know, the U.S., I don't know. I feel like I'm conflicted in the whole idea of going into war and the U.S. always interfering. So hearing that they had, you know, this kind of treaty with Ukraine where like they had to give up, you know, their, I, I wouldn't say power, but their protection. It's kind of iffy, and I feel like they do that often, and, you know, it's their responsibility. But at the same time, I'm like, I don't want to go to war. I don't want to be, you know, fighting somebody else's fight, and I feel like they often do that. And I think this is what is happening. It's like just this fight amongst people and Putin, you know, like gaining power and like, how can I show my power? So I don't know, I think it's a petty fight, but it's, you know, there's casualties and there's actual, you know, blood on this. So it's kind of scary.
Okay, Al, what do you think?
Putin's a killer.
Now, how do you really feel?
He's a killer. The question was asked, is he a war criminal? Is that going to be determined? With his past, his past experience in Syria? When he came to power, he, he probably gave, he probably did stabilize the, the Russian government, because he killed everybody. So, but now in, in Syria, I mean, he blasted everybody indiscriminately, because he's Russia, and nobody would, would front him. So now he comes to Ukraine, because somehow, some kind of convoluted way, he thinks that's part of Russia. But we just got a history lesson here that it may or may not be, so that's kind of confusing. So yes, he is. here that it may or may not be. So that's kind of confusing. So yes, he is a war criminal. And yes, he is a killer. But what I want to ask the academics here, how is he going to sustain, should all this play out? How's he going to sustain taking on Ukraine and rebuilding and reconstructing Ukraine when the, the economic climate in Russia is like a disaster?
Well, that, and that's the fundamental problem. So even if he quote unquote wins and topples the government in the Ukraine and establishes, either annexes them or establishes some kind of pro-Russian government, the Ukrainians have already showed they're not going to stand for that. I mean, we had that, we had that kind of mini civil war back, you know, was about eight years ago now in the Ukraine, when there was a kind of almost puppet government of Russia. So yeah, there's no, this is why I think some people have started to question his mental competency. And I, I don't like to knee jerk to that because, you know, people are always, was Trump insane? Is Biden senile? Yeah, I don't, I don't like to jump to that. But boy, you have to look at this situation and go, even if he wins, how does he think he's going to go? It just doesn't make any sense. So I, I completely am sympathetic to what you're saying. It, it just, it doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense. There's no end game. There might have been a, a, a beginning game. There might be a middle game. We see how the middle game is bogged down. What's the end game? I mean, he's, he's a pariah already. I mean, is he going to, is his poll numbers going to go up after all this is settled? I do not think so.
So, so let me, let me throw out something here, folks.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Okay, so he's, Putin's rationale was, look, there are ethnic Russians in the Ukraine that are being mistreated, right? And his position as the leader of Russia was to go in and intervene and protect his people. Now, on the one hand, you can say, that's the exact same rationale that Adolf Hitler gave
Yeah.
to invade
Exactly.
the Sudetenland, right?
Yeah.
To invade the Sudetenland. However, let me just bring in this other. If you are a Russian living in the Ukraine, and there are, as Alex pointed out, do you not want, if you are being mistreated, let's take this at face value and just say, maybe, maybe he's right. Maybe they are being mistreated. Is it not his duty to come in and help out?
I mean, it's, it's certainly, like, like you say, it's certainly an old trope that's been used many, many times by people in the past. And the, and the one thing I'll point out historically is the reason there's such a large number of Russians in the Ukraine is because under Stalin, there was forced immigration.
Purge.
So under Joseph Stalin, what Stalin did, Stalin was Georgian himself, but he, he used the Russians, the ethnic Russians, because they were the largest and most powerful group in the Soviet Union. And he forcefully repopulated certain areas with Russians. So he sent large numbers of Russians to the Ukraine. He sent large Russian, numbers of Russians to the, what, what are now the Stan's, you know, Kazakhstan and these kind of places, to Estonia, to Latvia, to Lithuania, to all these places, so that they would provide, from his point of view, stability in those places. The, the local ethnic group will be drowned out and he would have more power in that region. And so, I mean, that's important also to understand is, those Russians are there because they were forced to go there by Stalin back in the, generally in the 30s, late 20s, into the 30s. And so, from the point of view of the Ukrainians, certainly, the attitude is, well, if we're treating you bad, why don't you just move back to Russia? And, you know, and so that, that raises another question. Well, okay, if, if you're, you're not ethnically Ukrainian and you don't like it in the Ukraine, you could go back to Russia. It's not that far away. It's just up north. So I'll throw that out there. David may have a better perspective on that.
No, I think I like your perspective. I think it's perfect. It's, it's, it's such a reach for Putin to make this argument. I mean, because in this day and age, you can see everything going on the ground, you know? It's so, I mean, this, this is something he just basically made up as justification. And, you know, I, I absolutely agree that this man is nothing but a psychopath. He's a killer. He's a bully. And now he's stupid. That's, that's the new variable. I mean, he used to be a person who was, you know, very calculating in everything he did. Condi Rice said it the other night, said, look, this man was brilliant. He knew what was going on and he was calculating all the time. It doesn't look like that anymore. That's the scary thing. So I don't think there's any evidence of this. It's just the justification that he's making up.
And to the point you made earlier, Gene, about the economic situation, from, I, I was reading something yesterday that said something like the, the richest oligarchs in Russia have lost something like $80 billion? I, I read that number and I thought, how could that even be possible? But because of the ruble being kind of devaluated now to, a ruble's worth less than a penny, plus all the sanctions, plus all this, again, I would not be surprised, literally just today, I was reading a British paper today online, and I guess one of these oligarchs who's kind of living in exile has offered $1 million to any Russian general who will basically just go up and shoot Putin. He said, I will give you a million dollars cash if one of you guys literally just draws your pistol and shoots the guy. And you never know, if things get bad enough, that's not such a crazy idea to have happen in Russia.
Well, before we get accused of advocating anything, I want to thank all of you. Folks, this was a really, I'm not patting myself on the back. This was a good show. Yasmin Davila, Alex Bilakowski, David Branham.
Nice to meet you guys.
Al Castillo and Dr. Sergio Lira. I want to thank all of you for being on the show. You've really brought a lot of perspectives, things that I hadn't thought about. And I've learned, I, I don't always say that, but I really learned something on this show tonight about both, both things.
Yeah.
So thank you all very much for agreeing to be on the show tonight.
If I, if I just say, I'm learning from the young people, Yasmin, so.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly one of the things that I meant. So yeah, thank you. So thank you all and thank you for joining us tonight. For Public Affairs, Public Access on Houston Media Source TV. For the League of Women Voters of Houston, I'm Gene Price. Have a very good night.